Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. We'll call the City Council Meeting of the City of New Ulm to order. Item one is consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll move it. Second.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion does carry. Item 2.1 is a public hearing on the final plat of Garden Terrace 2nd Edition. At this time, the public hearing will be open. Mr. Schnoebrik, good afternoon.
Madam President, members of the City Council, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions, the final plat at its September 25th, 2025 meeting. The applicant in this case is a gentleman by name Matt Gatner, and he's doing this on behalf of Garden Terrace New Ulm II. That's LLC. The legal description of the property at the present time is all lot 178 except the northwesterly 370 feet, and then Lot 1 and Lot 2, Block 1, Garden Terrace Edition. Street address ranges from 10001 to 1021 North Garden Street. The property is generally located west of North Garden Street and south of Oak Street. The City Council approved with conditions the preliminary plat at its September 2nd, 2025 meeting. The parcel contains 8.8 acres. The outlot area has never been developed. The new plat would establish three new lots. In a comparison of the previous and the new plat, basically, the change that has taken place is that the new Lot 1 and Lot 3 have been reduced in size, and Lot 2 has been increased in size. And the owner is proposing to construct a 39-unit, three-story apartment building on the new Lot 2. Now, this is a reduction of six units from the number that was identified at the time of preliminary plat approval. The reason for this is that they have increased the number of two-bedroom units in the building, and the size of the building, though, stays the same. The building will provide housing for independent seniors 55 and over. The existing and proposed buildings comply with city code zoning standards for the R4 zoning district. The property lines between Lots 2 and 3 and Lots 1 and 2 cross the paved surface of the parking lots and service roads that serve Garden Terrace 1 and 2, and the owner is proposing to use a reciprocal easement agreement to address this situation. Copy of the easement is provided in Attachment 3, and I believe it's the very last sheet that shows you exactly where these locations are located. Upon completion of the project, that's its construction, it is proposed that the owner will lease the property to Oak Hills Living Center. Oak Hills will have the option to purchase the building at a future date. There are two recommended conditions. The first is that the appropriate parties will approve, sign, and record the reciprocal easement agreement, and the second is that the resolution approving the plat will be filed with the Brown County Recorder's Office. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Niceley. At this time, the public hearing is open.
Being I don't see anybody come up to the microphone, I'm going to motion to close the public hearing and offer a resolution with conditions approving the final plat of Garden Terrace 2nd Edition, generally located at 1011 North Garden Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Dave, were they still thinking of starting construction this fall/winter if this is approved?
What I have heard is that they would like to start December 15th.
Okay.
The reason being that the soil conditions are such that a frozen
Marsh.
Bed would be able to better handle equipment rather than its current condition.
Understood.
Which would make that much more difficult.
All right. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Warmke?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item 3.1 is a raffles gambling permit for New Ulm Youth Wrestling Association.
I'll make a motion to approve an issuance of a lawful gambling permit for the New Ulm Youth Wrestling Association to conduct raffles gambling at Rolling Thunder Wrestling, 1607 South German Street, New Ulm, Minnesota, on Sunday, December 21st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Item 4.1 is a summary of business conducted during board and commission meetings.
Due to lack of agenda items, we did not have a park and rec meeting. The EDA actually had two meetings. One was a special meeting for closing out a revolving, or get ready loan program, and as always, I'm going to defer the regular meeting to President Becker.
Thank you.
I have nothing new to report.
Okay. Counselor Mack?
I have nothing new to report.
Okay. Mayor?
Wow. I have lots to report.
Well, good.
Do I have a lot at time?
Three minutes.
Well, we're not going to break any records today, so you can go ahead. First of all, I attended two newcomer events within the last month, one sponsored by our own Human Rights Commission. It was a welcoming event, and then the following week, attended a newcomer event sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and both of them had great participation. And kudos to those who organized it, and I'm hoping that continues. And they did talk about perhaps bringing those two events together, so we'll see if that happens in the future. We had a police commission meeting where we did interviews for candidates for a corporal position, and that corporal position was filled, and we had a ceremony of induction this Monday. So Officer Andrew Ockman is now our newest corporal on our police department. Fest keg opening at Oktoberfest was well-attended. At that particular event on the first Saturday, we had a crew from Berlin, Germany, in town, and I was interviewed along with other people that were organizers as well as participants, and I asked them why they were here, and it was because New Ulm, they heard that New Ulm was the most German community in the United States. And they represented a German television station that is one of the most popular morning shows. So kudos to New Ulm on that and all that made that happen. Sister Cities Commission, Matt and Samuel, our exchange person for the Hansios program, did a presentation, and it was very informative and interesting. So that was good for us. I did a presentation for Network New Ulm on downtown New Ulm, 1955, and it was always fun to revisit that particular presentation to remind me and others of what downtown New Ulm used to be. And CDB has met twice since we did our reporting and basically working on their 2026 marketing plan and their budget. So very active and great things happening in New Ulm.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor. Just a little update from EDA is that we did receive an updated report from New Brick. The Tiny Homes Project is moving forward, so we're excited to see what that will mean for the community. Moving on to five communications. Item 5.1, request for tax abatement for Garden Terrace.
Madam President, members of the City Council, we just, council took the action of approving the plat of Garden Terrace 2nd Edition, and so this is the location of the proposed tax abatement program. It would be associated with the construction of the new apartment building. The business that is involved with this project has requested tax abatement assistance to help pay for excessive building costs and for enhanced structural expenses associated with the poor soils in the building area. A tax abatement program allows the city to rebate a portion of the property taxes back to the property owner, who then uses it to help offset development or redevelopment costs. The city at the present time has four active tax abatement programs, and a permitted use of tax abatement is general economic development that results in increased tax base. Preliminary projections for this project indicate a financial need for $862,092. Anticipated property taxes would produce this amount over a 10-year time period. However, the proposed project would also necessitate Brown County participation. The establishment of a tax abatement program will require a development agreement with the city, and a public hearing will be held on the project following the preparation of that development agreement. Tax payments will only be made if the applicant is not in default on the development agreement. The agreement will address the payment of property taxes, the construction of the building, and other related items. At this time, city staff is requesting authorization to proceed with the following steps. Number one is to retain the firm of David Drone Associates Incorporated to prepare the necessary documentation to establish the tax abatement program for the city at a cost of $3,000, and then city staff will provide all technical support required to complete the approval process for the project, and that would include any work associated with Brown County's phase of the project. work associated with Brown County's phase of the project. We tentatively would like to conduct the public hearing at your November 18th meeting, but we'll have to make sure that we have all of the necessary materials prepared by that time. That would conclude the staff report.
Thank you.
I have one question, Dave. I know it's based on, it looks good with the county. I know it's a loaded question, but that they'll participate in it?
So initial talks with their administrator, he seems confident that this would be a project the county would support because it is dealing with Oak Hills, helping them have a sustainable future. So what we're going to do if it is approved tonight at council, then I'll work with Sam to get it on their agenda. I think the first meeting in November is what we're shooting for, to have that conversation with the county commissioners, see if they'll approve it, and then if that goes through, then we'll do a joint advertisement for the public hearings to approve it.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Yeah. The county and the city are required to go through the same approval process, so everything we do, they also have to do.
I was just curious if you heard anything like, no, we're not going to. I mean, with that being said, I'll authorize the staff and project consultant to prepare the documentation necessary to establish a tax abatement program for Garden Terrace New Ulm Limited Liability Company and Garden Terrace New Ulm Two Limited Liability Company.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion does carry. Under Old Business, 6.1 is the 2025 MSAS Improvement Projects. Mr. Stodheim.
The presidency, counselors. Previously, you have considered awarding a consultant contract for this project, and we are now at the moment in time where plans to progress have been approved by the MinDOT District 7 State Aid Engineer to proceed with this project. As a reminder, this is a slope and scour stabilization project on Minnesota River Bridge, on 20th South Street, or Casaw 37, and it's bridge number 08520. It had an underwater inspection performed late last year. We received a report in January, and it's noted significant scour under Pier One for the bridge, so it was deemed that as an emergency project, this wasn't a planned project, and we are now at the point where we want to move forward and receive bids for the project. And one last item to note that this is a 50/50 cost share with Nicollet County, an agreement which you previously approved.
Thank you.
I'm okay with that, so I'm going to offer the resolution approving the plans and specs and ordering the advertising for bids for the 2025 MSAS Improvement Project, Bridge Number 08520, slope and scour stabilization, setting the bid opening date and authorizing staff to receive and open bids for the project at 10:00 AM Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, in City Hall Council Chambers.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 6.2 is a Project Spark Development Agreement. Mr. Niceley, hello.
Good evening, Council President, counselors. John Niceley, planner with the City of New Ulm. This is a resolution approving the development agreement with Project Spark for the property legally described as lots one through eight, Block One, Integer Edition, and generally located at 415 13th South and 1305 through 1315 South Minnesota Street, and would authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. There was no board or planning commission recommendation on this item, and the preparation and approval of the development agreement was a requirement in order to rezone the subject property from medium-density residence district, that's the R3 district, to plan unit development district number four, or PUD number four. Approval of the development agreement would facilitate the development of the following. Phase one would be the construction of two model homes on lots one and two, Block One, Integer Edition, and that's fronting 13th South Street, and phase one is proposed to start in the fall of 2025. Phase two would be the construction of 13 additional homes with a common building on the site, and phase two could start as early as spring of 2026. The homes and common building would be owned by Project Spark in New Brick, and all the homes would be rented out. The developer will be constructing a parking area along the valley and installing utility services to serve each home. The development agreement was prepared with the assistance of the city attorney and has been reviewed by New Brick and Project Spark, as well as their attorney. I would, though, I would note, since there was a little address mistake on the top, what will happen here on this site is it will be given one address, and then each one of the buildings will be given a separate unit number. And so you guys know, when we decide on addressing for properties like this, we work with the police department, the fire department, the post office, and emergency services to come up with the addressing that works for everybody. So that concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Niceley.
I do have one question. The building official isn't going to like me, but that issue, when we had looked into the building code, stands, right? There is no need for shelters. Thank you. I should explain myself. There was a question came up with the project about having to have an emergency shelter for these people. No, as long as they're built, state of Minnesota qualified building standards codes, they don't need it.
I have no other questions, I guess, too, so I'll offer the resolution approving the development agreement with Project Spark for the property legally described as lots one through eight, Block One, Integer Edition, generally located at 418 and 424, 13th South Street, and 1305 to 1315 South Minnesota Street, and authorize the city manager and finance director to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Under New Business, we have library donations. Item 7.1.
I'll offer the resolution to accept donations to the New Ulm Public Library for the period beginning July 1 to September 30, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Would we like to read the donations into the record?
We've got quite a few of them, if you want me to go down.
We generally do, yes.
Okay, we've got, where do I want to start here? So the donor is Dory Nicholas, Mount, $19, books. Anonymous donation, $20 cash. Friends of the New Ulm Public Library, $350 cash. Doug and Betty Royger, $50 cash. Larry Steber, $25 cash. Anonymous donor Judy Nelson, $20 cash. Bob and Helen Vogel, $25 cash. Jill Colts, $20 cash. Anonymous, $100 cash. Randy and Teresa Merkel, $25 cash. Michelle Finrell, $75. I'll go to the next page here. So that's, we got Optimus Club of New Ulm, $800 cash, so that's total donations of $1,540.57. And I think we have, that must be it.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. Item 7.2 is fire department donations.
I'll offer the resolution to accept the following donations to the New Ulm Fire Department. $100 from Ryan and Stefan Meyer, $100 from Joanne Fish, $110 from tips at the Beech Ranch during the fire prevention week, and $200 from Christiansen Farms.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the role.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion carries. With no additional business today, our meeting is adjourned. Work session will follow shortly. Thank you.